From our student delegation and their visit to Encinitas. We'll start with a short video and follow with personal testimony.
On July 29th, Encinitas welcomed delegates from Amaksa, Japan as part of the Sister City Program. Six students, a dedicated teacher chaperone, and a city official from Amaksa spent the week experiencing our vibrant coastal life firsthand. The delegates received a warm welcome with fantastic swag, gifts, and clothes donated by Encinitas 101, the Encinitas Chamber, and Cardiff 101. These gifts filled backpacks from Hanson's along with sunscreen and some other gifts from SunBum. The week was packed. Activities included hitting the waves for surf lessons from Concept Surf Shop, enjoying beach volleyball at Moonlight Beach with lessons from Sinjin Smith Volleyball. They also took an exciting e-bike tour down Coast Highway 101, thanks to rentals from Trek and Charlie's E-Bike. An unforgettable experience for the students was skateboarding lessons with local Olympian Bryce Westeen, an experience donated by the Kelly family, who also opened their home to host a delegate. Bryce made the students feel welcomed and comfortable, with many of the students excited to continue skating back in Japan. The delegates also got creative. At Pacific View Arts Center, they screenprinted their own tote bags and participated in Pacific View sessions. A major highlight was a visit to Petco Park. The Padres organization generously donated Japanese heritage hats and Japanese-translated tour of the facility. After the tour, the delegates watched a thrilling Padres win and a lucky few left with priceless memories during warmups. Our guests from Amaksa were excited to try a wide array of food in Encinitas. A very large breakfast was donated by Swami's Cafe. A lively fiesta hosted at the Encinitas Library featured delicious tacos from El Nopolito and a performance from Ballet Folclorico. Encinitas firefighters grilled burgers and hot dogs at Encinitas Fire Station, too, and thank you to Aliana's Party Rentals for making it possible to host these events throughout so many locations in the city. Sweet Toots weren't forgotten. A tasting experience was enjoyed at Choice Juicery, delightful doughnuts from Broad Street Doko, and delegates cooled off with ice cream sandwiches from The Baked Bear. City Council, staff, and members of the Youth Commission joined in on various activities throughout the week, sharing their local insights and building connections. The delegates departed for Los Angeles on Monday, August 4th, before heading back to Amaksa. They carried with them more than just souvenirs. It took home fantastic experiences, and most importantly, new friendships that bridge oceans. None of this would have been possible without the incredible dedication of the Sister City Committee and all the wonderful host families who volunteered their time and opened their homes and hearts to our friends in Amaksa. Your generosity truly made this trip memorable. The Sister City Program continues to build lasting connections, reinforcing the strong commitment to a cultural exchange shared by both our communities.
That video is great, right? Dean Day Kirin, he did all the videos for us. He is the best. But "koncha" means gratitude in Japanese. I was supposed to say I am so grateful for the experience of being both a delegate and exchange host, and the food and cultural traditions were so special. I still talk to my host family every week and get videos of my host brother hitting home runs for his baseball team. The exchange helped me to understand how curiosity connects cultures and people, inspiring a lifelong passion for civic responsibility. I was supposed to keep this short, so I'm going to add something that was brand-new and happened yesterday, which was I had a really special moment when I went to Amaksa, which was getting to read the Giving Tree and exchanging back and forth between English and Japanese with the Superintendent of Education for Japan. And that was such an important moment in my life that when they came, the adults came to Encinitas, I gave them books to bring to the library in exchange of, like, as a thank you. And yesterday, I received a box from the library with Japanese books. So this is a book about sushi, because they know I love food, and they know I eat a lot of sushi. And they also had it on their newsletter, which later, if you guys would like, I have photos of the newsletter that they had with talking about the books and sending me photos. And it's just something that's so symbolic of how special this program is, that years later, they can remember such a truly special experience and something that changed so many people's lives. So, thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Samantha Merrick. I was a new host this year. I was excited at the opportunity to show off Encinitas, and I loved taking Rico to the beach and to Annie's Canyon. I was surprised by how much I learned about Encinitas by being a host. It was a great experience.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alana Kumagai. I've been both a host family and a delegate for our city. These past few years, I've had the opportunity to participate in this program have been transformative. Sharing all about Encinitas with students and our friends from Japan gave me the chance to see our city all over again through their eyes, share our cultures, and learn from each other. As a delegate, I've had the opportunity to meet so many cool, kind people and learn about Japanese culture and language. These experiments, experiences have given me more confidence to go out of my comfort zone and find a voice in my community, doing things like running for co-president at my high school's Japanese club and serving on Encinitas Youth Commission. This program has inspired me to help build bridges between people and create more of these kinds of experiences for our community to enjoy. Thank you for the opportunity to be involved.
Hello. My name is Tyler Overstreet, and I'm from Sandeguito Academy, and I've had the pleasure of being on both sides of the Sister City Exchange Program. Last year, I arrived as a guest but was treated as family, and that experience taught me something. It taught me that exchange is not about culture, it's about humanity. Now, having hosted a Japanese delegate myself, I've seen that lesson come full circle, realizing the humanity of others comes when we open our homes and our hearts and when we connect, not as strangers from different countries, but as humans from the same planet with the same aspirations and the same goals. And it's in these mundane moments, sharing meals, laughing over language barriers, talking about our futures, that true empathy comes from. These moments remind us that while culture may shape us, it's our shared humanity that unites us. I'm beyond grateful for this program to letting me see both sides of the exchange and for showing that connection across borders creates not just understanding, not just cultural enrichment, but hope, hope for unity among humanity and hope for our future. Thank you.
As a longtime participant of this program, I continue to be amazed at the legacy and the impact that this program provides. And as a short example, on this most recent visit from Amaksa, the delegates were accompanied by a city official from the city of Amaksa. Due to some last-minute changes, he was tasked with going on the trip last minute, and as a result, almost viewed the trip as an obligatory work trip. However, during his week here, his perception on that changed completely, so much so that at the end of the trip, he described this as a life-changing experience and as well is invigorated to plan a program for us next year that could possibly match the experience that he had just had. Our friends in Amaksa eagerly look forward to welcoming delegations from us next year and beyond. On behalf of the Sister City Committee, the host families, and the community of Encinitas, we thank the city for your continued support of this incredible program. Thank you and arigato. To conclude, we have a gift from the city of Amaksa. They wished to present this while they were here, but unfortunately got held up in customs. So we have a short explanation of the gift.
And should we get a picture with the gift so that we can acknowledge it back?
And we'll grab one after we get an explanation.
Okay.
If that's good.
All right. The Amaksa delegation has gifted the city of Encinitas a piece of Amaksa Serasa, a traditional textile art that dates back over 400 years. The patterns, often featuring flowers, birds, and plants, reflect both tranquility and vibrancy. Historically, Serasa has even been used by families separated by trade restrictions to send secret heartfelt messages encoded in the fabric's designs. This gift symbolizes the beauty of Amaksa's culture and the enduring friendship between our two communities. And now, we'd like to take a photo altogether to send to our friends in Amaksa.
And that brings us to oral communications. So, oral communications are public comments that are not on tonight's agenda. We allocate up to 30 minutes for oral communications at the beginning of our regular meetings. And, let's see, speakers typically are granted three minutes with no time donations permitted, and the chair has the authority to limit the duration if we have an excessive number of speakers. And how many do we have tonight?
Nine.
Nine. Oh, cool. Wow. So, guess what? For a first time in a long time, three minutes! And we'll do them all right now. So, we'll start oral communications.
I'll call you three at a time. Melissa Sharbart, followed by Chris Powell, and then Kelly Perez.
Good evening. I'm here to share a heartwarming story with you. Last week, after I attended a meeting at the Encinitas Sheriff's Department, I shared with my students about the brief visit. I wanted them to know that community leaders are working together to make the city safer. Immediately, one of my students raised her hand and shared what she had noticed around town. The perspective of a child is powerful because it comes without filters and straight from lived experiences. I'd like to share a short clip of her words with you.
Hi, I'm Dani. I'm in fourth grade. I go to Parkdale Lane. On the way to, I've been noticing on the way to school and on the way home from school, a lot of police officers. We've noticed like 12 in total, and some of those were pull-overs, and which probably means they're past the speed limit, which kind of makes me feel safer to know that we're not, like, for like the kids who are riding their bikes, and I feel like it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea because it feels safer when the kids, they might be in the, like, in case they might be, a car might not stop on red, and then it's the kid's turn, the police officer can rush over and tell that car to stop or stop the kid, which makes me feel lucky.
So, I know that you don't often get a lot of atta boys. So, I'm here to extend my gratitude for the role you've played in creating a stronger sense of security for our children through more consistent enforcement on our streets. One suggestion I'd like to offer is funding additional law enforcement presence, especially in areas where out-of-town drivers cut through and disregard the speed limit. My hope is that this ongoing success will build a reputation for Encinitas as a city where drivers know they must slow down and stop on red. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you.
Well, you're lucky. I only did two minutes from all the previous meetings. Mayor, council members, my name is Chris Powell. I'm a resident of Encinitas for 44 years and an active resident of District 1 for nine years. Active resident means I actively have been serving our community as a volunteer, in a volunteer capacity, and a paid election committee member. I am active for what I believe in. I believe my district council member should represent our residents with credibility and trust. Councilmember Schaefer has broken that trust with District 1 and our city. Although he has not been convicted of any allegations of anger and violence, it has been recorded on a video to ring true. At the August 20th council meeting, again on video, Councilmember Schaefer was standing, he is not a politician, he ran for this office to get rid of those other people. I took offense to this statement. To me, that says he is not here to serve our community. It does not move our city forward or bring us together. My only personal interaction with Councilmember Schaefer was a DM message in Instagram, and this message was during the 2024 election. I requested, which is a huge pet peeve of mine because I was in charge of signs, that I requested that he would please not put his signs in illegal places in the city. The response that I got from him was, you know, I'm sorry we did that, but also, his response at the end was, "We are focused on uniting Encinitas. Please show kindness to your neighbors." Councilmember Schaefer has not demonstrated kindness or unity to our city. I hope that Councilmember Schaefer seeks the help he needs to find that kindness, and I hope the good conscience, with good conscience, he resigns his position as council member. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kelly Perez, followed by Scott Campbell, Lise McCarty, and then Dave Dean.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I know that this was taken off the agenda tonight, but I want to bring it to the forefront again. I live on Clark Avenue, and I sent you all a video today about this street. That is a nonstop constant, trying to get out and down the street. If you all look in your email, you'll see that there was a vehicle leaving, the truck, there is a sweeper coming this way, and then the residents are trying to get around. It is a danger vehicle. If there was an emergency, could not get down the street. Someone's kid is going to get hurt. There is no sidewalk on the other side, and now you're going to have 400 a day cars at least, plus, coming down the street. So I just want to know, I know that you took it off tonight. I have a mom at home with Alzheimer's. It's this important for me to leave her to come down here tonight to address you. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Council. The more things change, the more they say "I'm a Sam again." I thought we were done with this decorum stuff and addressing the council as a body and not individuals, maybe we can do something better. Anyways, I have a nice presentation about emergency decorations. We did some research, and we tabulated recent emergency decorations in the city going back to 2020. I can't say this is a complete list, but it is pretty extensive, and I hope people know where this is, I'm not even going to say. So, going back to 2020, we had the local emergency for COVID, and we're still, that's still open. And in fact, last week, we talked about street dining and getting more money for that. So, I mean, this is still going on, and interestingly, I found today, the meal delivery fees, I believe that's still on there, a cap. So we're actually capping business in the city. I got 19 items on this list, and of those 19, nine are sinkholes and sewers, four are fire stations, three are climate COVID, two are staircases, and one is e-bikes. And I thank the city for getting ahead of Grandview so it doesn't add this list. So on the second page here, the only one that's really still open here, well, actually there's more, the emergency relocation of Fire Station 1 is still open. I've seen the buildings. I don't see how we're ever going to go away from there, but that's fine. D Street is, I don't think we're open there yet. Moonlight, that was just last week or two weeks ago, so I doubt that that's closed. But these are real emergencies that the city declared emergency decorations. And I've just, the point is, some of the stuff that's been happening lately, if people are afraid, this does not quite make it to any of these actual lists. In 2023, in June 28, we did an e-bike safety, and actually, what happened there was we had 10 sign boards, and we're having new ones right now, and for 12 weeks, we had that, and we had 300 signs, I guess there's like little political signs or something, and that expired after three months. So, I just wanted to educate the council a little bit and give them a little bit of history lesson on what's been going on with all of this emergency stuff, and thank you for the three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Ehlers, councilmen, councilwomen. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here as a first-time speaker to ask for safety on Santa Fe Drive East. I have a picture, and my concern is unsafe biking conditions between Wotan and Monterey Vista, either side of Lake Avenue. Next slide, please. So I took a picture to show that this is heading west on Santa Fe, just from Wotan down, heading towards Lake. The picture illustrates that this bike lane, it ends, it just ends with, it's on a blind curve, it ends with very little runway, and our kids are forced to merge into commuter traffic. That's a 30 mile an hour zone. It's got a lot of commuters. They're coming from District 4. That's, if you are coming from anyplace south of Crest, that's Village Park, they're coming through, they have that sur-only access to SDA. I've been driving this route for six years. I have two kids currently in SDA, and I have one that's graduated. So I've been watching all of the process, all the progress. There is no, as you can see, there's no sidewalk, there's no bike lane, and there's very dense vegetation. They can't even get away from the cars, and that, I don't know if that picture shows just how narrow that is, but they have nowhere to go, and it's a very short merge. Respectfully, I would ask all of you to ride your bike between 8:10 and 8:30, see what these kids experience. I went out there and stood on the side of the road. I didn't feel safe riding it, but I wanted, driving it is not the same as actually being in open air on a bike or standing there, and you will really experience what these kids experience. It's very dangerous. My ask, and they're coming from District 4, potentially from Village Park for District, your district, and Mayor Ehlers, this is your last district, or your previous district, so please, help us make that place more safer. SDA, it's the main entry into SDA from the east, and these kids, it should be the safest way to get there, and right now, it's not. So I would ask that you would prioritize funds when you look at what you're going to be funding. Use the funds to make that, it's a two-block area, there's lots of improvements that can be made anywhere, but this is the worst of the bunch. Please, please, help us keep these kids safe and give them a safe way to get to school. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Dave Dean, followed by Molly Hentleyan, Van Cheng, and then Bernie Dillon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Dave Dean, Encinitas. I am speaking tonight to hopefully invoke a positive spirit about our city and our community, and would like to see more of that taking place amongst the people here and the people in our community. Specifically, I think with, in conjunction, the American Legion, we're trying to promote a Fourth of July parade for next year, 250th birthday of our country. I think it would be an amazing opportunity for our city to bring a positive light, and in that vein, I personally posted a little 30-second video on a parade that took place last week going down the 101 with a lot of American flags, and to my surprise, got over 150,000 likes and comments. 95% of those are positive and supportive of Encinitas and the job that we're doing. So, I would like to see us create more positive spirit for our community, and if we can do that, that would be amazing. Also have a form to pass along to Jennifer Campbell from the Marine Corps. I believe we have an opportunity where they would like to do a Marine Corps marching band if we decide to move forward to it. That would be our great point for our community also. So other than that, that's about what I got. So, have a great week ahead, great meeting, and we'll see you down in Rock Garden. Bye.
Good evening, Council. Molly Hentleyan, District 2. So, the VMS signs, I want to congratulate the city staff for quickly putting them out there, and I've seen three of them out there, and I have some suggestions. Next slide. This is Santa Fe Eastbound Obey Speed Limits, Coast Highway 101. This one's a good one. Stay off the phone. And then, I didn't get a picture of it because I was driving. This is Encinitas Boulevard Westbound, Slow Down, Stop at the Red Light. So, I like to talk about bike helmets. So, every bike ride begins with putting on a helmet according to the National Highway Traffic Safety. So, I'd like to see us, I looked at the guidelines for VMS messaging, and I know it needs to be quick, limited to eight to 10 characters, easily read, and abbreviations are discouraged. But I think that if we have an opportunity, it's a suggestion to staff to rotate out our messaging, wear a helmet, bike with a helmet on. And lastly, I want to speak to some other suggestions. We had a great presentation from the Youth Commission. I wish they got to stay because I'd love them to get involved. We need to activate more safety awareness, and I talk about driver behavior. It is, it's driver behavior, it's pedestrian behavior, it's biking behavior. So why not ask our youth to get involved? And I have some follow-up questions, and it relates to what Scott talked about. Back in June of 2023, there was a declaration of emergency for e-bike safety and messaging, and my question is, did this emergency ever expire? And my questions are, what were the results from the programs that were rolled out at the schools? And were there any key learnings? And why have we stopped that messaging? So, I'll be bringing up these same questions to our Mobility and Traffic Safety Commission, and I hope that our staff can provide us some insight. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and the Council. I'm Van Cheng. I just want to bring up the concern on Quail Gardens Drive. I hope you guys, I'm sure a lot of you are aware of the small brush fire that happened about two weeks ago off Lucadia. There was back-to-back, and you couldn't get from Quail Gardens Drive to even Saxony without it being 45 minutes. And the concern that has now been formulated by Encinitas Ranch and all the people living on Quail Gardens is just that there's now illegal parking on the bike lanes, and that's even worse. I just saw, serendipity, a patient this morning, and she was, she's one of the people that had to leave Pacific Palisades, and she says that it reminds her exactly of how she, they were locked in when the fires happened. No escape, because on Quail Gardens, Encinitas Ranch Community dumps both into Quail Gardens. And what I'm asking the city to do is to paint the bike lanes red to make the construction workers know that they cannot park there, because if you were to exit my home on Quail Point Lane, you couldn't even make that right to get off. There were cars there, the construction workers, and unfortunately, this set a bad precedent because now the apartment dwellers on Marina Ray Apartments, they're parking there overnight, and that's illegal. There's two posted no-parking bike lanes, and I appeal to you to paint them red, just so people are aware. This has never happened before. I've lived in that same house for 17 years, and it all started with, you know, the construction workers. And what I want to make sure is that, and Steve Gurkin wanted me to bring this up, I don't know if this is true, but if it's illegal, I assume the sheriffs should be ticketing, and he called the sheriff's apartment, and he went afterwards to check. No tickets were given, no citations. So you can't even get that line of construction workers. So, at least if we're calling in, ticket them. Thank you.
And that one, we can, through the chair, please. The, I will refer this one to staff, if you can have staff, because if it's illegal, it's illegal, it should be ticketed.
And then could staff share your contact with me or vice versa, please?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. First of all, I'm going to start out with two positives. Thank you for the signage on Santa Fe Drive. People are actually paying attention to that big sign. And thank you all for the sheriffs that are constantly out in our community. We have several homes that are remodeling, and their construction people are parked everywhere where there is. everywhere where there is no place for anybody else to park, so I appreciate the sheriff going out there and saying, you gotta move. On the other note, we cannot let Santa Fe Drive go on any longer as is. We've been talking about this since December of 2024. Since then, several people have been severely injured. The very people who stood at the corner of Santa Fe Drive, who want Santa Fe Drive to change, are bicyclists. The people who are mostly, most of the people that have been hurt are bicyclists on Santa Fe Drive. The meeting for Santa Fe Drive can't wait until November. The meeting needs to happen ASAP before anybody else gets hurt on Santa Fe, the western portion of Santa Fe Drive. We, the people of Encinitas, have shown you pictures of the challenges and videos of the issues of the western portion of Santa Fe Drive. Kids who ride their bikes on Wednesdays to school on the south side of Santa Fe Drive, when they hit the different trash recycle and green bins into the street or into the pedestrians who are on the sidewalks, there is nowhere for these trashcans to go, except it's going to hit someone, or it's going into the lanes of traffic. Both sides of the road, it doesn't matter, and this, I'm just talking about the western portion of Santa Fe Drive. Every day Santa Fe Drive stays as is, is a threat to our budget. Driving on this portion of Santa Fe Drive is anxiety-driven. Watching kids get hurt in the rocks and planter boxes makes me sick to my stomach. I will quote Mayor Ellers, "I support calming streets, there are many good calming streets, Santa Fe Drive is not one of them." Please put Santa Fe Drive back on the agenda in October, let's fix this before someone gets so seriously injured. So far, there've only been injuries, let's keep it that way. Last night at 9:36 PM, fireworks were going off once again. Lawlessness endangers all of our lives. Pacific Palisades is a perfect example of illegal fireworks. When will you raise the penalties and fines? Remember Sacramento made millions of dollars last July 4th. We need the money to pay for all the injuries on Santa Fe Drive, and nobody wants to be on the City Council that let what happened in L.A. destroy Encinitas. Those fireworks have got to stop, and they're not the little sparklers, they're the big ones that go boom, like the ones you see at Del Mar, and people just keep firing them off. I don't know what holiday it was yesterday, but apparently my neighbors thought it was a great time to fire off, and it's not one or two, it's 10. Thank you.
That does conclude oral communications.
Okay. Was that eight or nine? That was, was nine? Okay, I lost counting there. With that, we're now moving on to report from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The special closed session was called today at 4:00 PM, it recessed approximately 10 to, 10 to 6:00. While in closed session, the City Council discussed one case, closed session, Composty Legal Counsel, whether to initiate litigation under the Authority of Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subsection D, Subsection 4, one case. While in closed session, the City Council took the following action. The City Council voted to initiate litigation by the following vote, on motion of Council Member Schaefer, second by Council Member San Antonio. All the four council members in favor, Schaefer, San Antonio, Mayor Ellers, and Deputy Mayor, and Mayor, Mayor Ellers, as well as Council Member O'Hara. One council member voted against, and that was Council Member Deputy Mayor Joy Lyons. The name and identity of the defendant, or the possible, potential defendant, will be revealed if and when that lawsuit is filed. And that concludes the report from closed session.
Okay, and are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the posted agenda, and then moving to the consent calendar, no items have been removed by the public.
And would, anybody like to pull any items on the consent calendar? Okay, so.
I just had a question. On ADI, one of the attachments, which was something you and I were working on in committee, was the legislative policy priorities, and I'm just wondering if we had an estimate on when those were going to come back for review?
I think in October, is what we had talked about, for the legislative lobbying policy.
Yes, I'm just waiting for the subcommittee report, so once I get that from you folks, we can agendize it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain motion.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, call the question.
That motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and that moves us on. Item nine, we didn't have anything pulled, so we move on to item 10, and item 10A was removed from the agenda, so we move straight to item 10B. And this is a public hearing to consider and approve the fiscal year 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPR, for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and the contact person is Housing Management Analyst Schubert. So we'll start with a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. The item for you tonight is the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. Local jurisdictions must comply with several CDBG reporting requirements, including the Consolidated Plan, the Action Plan, and the CAPR. The Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that prioritizes community development and housing needs and guides the use of federal funds to meet those needs. The Action Plan identifies projects and activities to be funded and implemented during the fiscal year. The CAPR reports on the actual accomplishments and expenditures from the prior fiscal year. This CAPR represents the fifth and final year of the Fiscal Year 2020-2025 Consolidated Plan, and must be submitted to HUD within 90 days of the program year's end. Here are a few highlights from this past year. Of the $287,000 allocated for fiscal year 2425, a total of $99,811 was expended, resulting in assistance to 838 Encinitas residents. 94% of the residents assisted were extremely low-income. 50 Encinitas residents were provided referrals, advice, or representation for Fair Housing Services. Through the Residential Rehabilitation Program, three low-income homeowners were assisted with critical home repairs. Breaking these numbers down further, the Community Resource Center's Food and Nutrition Center served 687 residents. Meals on Wheels delivered 7,577 meals to 63 Encinitas seniors. Coastal Roots Farm provided 2,712 pounds of fresh produce and 659 one-on-one visits to seniors. Legal Aid Society provided referrals, advice, or representation to 50 individuals from Encinitas. They conducted five fair housing tests based on national origin, with no findings of discrimination. They held monthly fair housing webinars, which resulted in fair housing education to 42 Encinitas residents, and they distributed over 5,200 brochures in English and Spanish. The Residential Rehabilitation Program assisted three homeowners with critical home repairs, including roofing, windows, and plumbing improvements. An additional rehabilitation project is underway and expected to complete, be completed this year. In terms of funding, $40,300 in carryover funding from fiscal year 2324 was expended for the Residential Rehabilitation Program. All three public service providers, the Community Resource Center, Meals on Wheels, and Coastal Roots Farm, fully expended their allocations. Our fair housing provider, Legal Aid Society of San Diego, utilized the majority of its allocation, with remaining funds reallocated to the Residential Rehabilitation Program. Residential expenditures were lower due to the multi-year nature of these projects, which depend on a homeowner's ability to income-qualify, homeowner readiness, contractor availability, and permitting. All unspent, all unspent funds remain committed and will be utilized in '25, '26. To conclude, staff recommends that City Council approve the fiscal year 2024-25 CAPR, and authorize the city manager or designee to submit the CAPR to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This concludes the presentation, I'm available for questions.
Okay, before we go to questions, this is a public hearing, so first thing we have to do is disclose, so I'll ask the council to disclose any other information they have received that was not included in the staff report, so starting with Council Member San Antonio.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have nothing to disclose. So with that, do we have any preliminary questions of staff? Looks like no, so I will open the public hearing. Do we have public speakers?
We do have four.
Okay.
Sorry, we do have four. John Van Cleef, Christine Spencer, Helen Lopez, and then Van Parker.
Good evening, Mayor Ellers and Council Members, it's good to see you again. John Van Cleef, speaking on behalf of CRC. I'm wearing orange, as are other CRC Encinitas residents volunteers, it's Hunger Action Month, and it seemed appropriate tonight to call that out, as we're talking about the Food and Nutrition Program, and the success it's had over the last year. Really want to thank the Council for its investment into this through CDBG, and also the allocation of general funds. You'll see that we had a target of helping 415 Encinitas residents, and we helped 687. That increase in number is largely due to seniors, the increase in number of seniors who are coming to us, as well as working families who are impacted by the economy. Another thing I wanted to be sure and call out among the total number served is those who are unsheltered versus those who are sheltered, it's been a theme of our conversations, and I want to demonstrate that in graphic form as well. So of the folks we helped, 550 are housed, sheltered, and 137 are unhoused, and that number is consistent with the unhoused number of people from the point-in-time count. 59% of the folks helped are 18 to 54, 41% are 55-plus, that's up 5% from the prior year, so the age wave in economic security is catching up. But more than anything, I really wanted to tell you the story of a family helped. This is data, but beyond the story is the people being helped. Valerie is an Encinitan who received support from the Food and Nutrition Center, and whose story is representative of the supermajority of people CRC serves. Valerie came to CRC where there are three young children after leaving an abusive relationship. Like many survivors, she faced an uncertain future, but also, like many, like many, she, anyhow, like unmany, unlike many, she was able to keep her job and remain in the community she came from to keep working, holding one piece of stability for her family. The children received support and therapy from our licensed counselors. One was acting out in anger, the other was acting out in withdrawal. Through the therapy and their engagement in the therapeutic children's center, the children began to heal. Valerie worked with determination, she increased her hours at work, paid off her debt, created a budget, and saved money. She now lives in her own house. They visited the food pantry regularly as a part of their program and a part of their recovery. So thank you for helping Valerie and countless others.
Hello, City Council Members and Mayor. My name is Christine Spencer, I'm the Director of Grants and Impact for Coastal Roots Farm. Coastal Roots Farm was established in 2015, located on Saxony Road where the Ecki Ranch used to be. We are a nonprofit community farm education center, where we practice organic farming, share our harvest with those who lack access, deliver unique farm-based education, and foster inclusive spaces for people of all ages and backgrounds to come together to engage in ways that catalyze a healthier, more vibrant community, and a more sustainable future for the region. We grow about 80,000 pounds of food through regenerative agricultural practices. We serve 45,000 community members located throughout San Diego County, but more importantly, 75% and more than that is donated to 33,000 low-income, food insecure members. We also, we do that through partnerships located throughout San Diego County, and we have a Pay What You Can Farm Stand, where residents of Encinitas and surrounding areas are allowed to have up to $30 free of food. We also provide STEM education for more than 11,000 youth who have, we have programs from toddler through college age, and we actually have about 15,000 people who come a year for events that we have on-site. We're very thankful for the funds from the Community Development Block Grant, and that was, we were able to continue serving 35 residents, low-income seniors at Mercy's, Canterbury, Canterbury, sorry, senior homes in Encinitas. What's really important about this is our farm staff actually bring produce, eggs, and herbs to 35 residents door-to-door, we hand-deliver those. So not only are we providing that food, that's straight from our farm, but we're also having that time to check in with those residents, make sure they're doing okay, and, you know, sometimes they sit there and listen to stories for a long time, and it's just that connection that we've been able to have. We also provide educational resources with the produce and the herbs and the eggs that we provide, so they're able to prepare meals, recipes, and again, just get some more education that they need about this healthy produce. In the last year, like Cindy Schubert said, we provided 2,712 pounds of food. We go once to three times a month to do that, and like I said, it's our farm staff going door-to-door for those 35 residents. One testimonial says, "The produce distributions are tremendous, and helps both for me to get fresh, organic produce, and also it is a great help financially, as I live on an extremely limited food budget." Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Helen Lopez, I am the Director of the North County Service Center for Meals on Wheels, San Diego County. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak today on how the Community Development Block Grant has helped serve our mission here in the city of Encinitas. As was mentioned, we were gifted $10,000 to serve here in the city of Encinitas, which allowed us to serve 63 seniors, which as was said, was over 7,000 meals that we were able to serve here in Encinitas. But beyond meals, what we deliver is independence, safety, and human connection. For many of our clients, the volunteer is the only person that they see that day. I volunteered for Meals on Wheels for four years before I started working in the office, and I must say, the volunteer just gets as much out of the interaction as the client does as well, and I feel like that's why we keep volunteers for over 40 years, because of the relationships that are made with the clients and the volunteers. I, I still keep in contact with someone who I volunteered with over eight years ago, so it's just the relationships are amazing that you're able to form with the clients. The wellness checks and the friendly conversations that accompany each delivery are just as vital as the food itself. I just want to say thank you, Schaefer, Council Member Schaefer came out to deliver meals, as well as the San Diego Sheriff's Department, as well, during our Champions for Meals, to be able to see what it's like firsthand to volunteer with Meals on Wheels and to interact with the clients as well, we really appreciate it. These outcomes are only possible because of the city's commitments to supporting programs like Meals on Wheels through the CBD funding. Every time a volunteer goes out to deliver a meal, we deliver through a mobile app, and every time a volunteer is asked, once they deliver the meal, it asks if there's a change of condition, yes or no. So every time a volunteer is going out, we're able to report any changes of conditions that are going on with the clients. They hit yes, they hit no, when they hit yes, it gives them a whole bunch of options to choose from, mental health, home health, other things that the volunteer sees that they may not normally see while they're out delivering, and it goes back to our office, where we have a care navigator who follows up with every change of condition that goes out when the volunteer, when the volunteer is out delivering, and then we provide additional resources to all those clients as well. So we are much more than a meal, everyone, whenever I go out, everyone knows who Meals on Wheels is, it's great that our name is out there, but we also service pet food to every client as well, so every client that cert, gets free pet food. as well. So every client that gets free pet food, it's all donated by Helen Woodward to us. So cats and dogs only. We have a lot of people who ask other animals, but that is all we serve. So we just want to say thank you tonight for us to be able to serve.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. My name is Van Parker. I serve on the board at Produce Good, as well as being a volunteer there. Felt somewhat compelled to come here and speak this evening and support. I think this is obviously a no-brainer, but to, and listening to the previous speakers, thinking about the interconnectedness of the nonprofits that we have here in town and the work that we do together. So we collect produce for distribution through CRC. Our group actually is located on the Leach Tag Common Ground, so we're co-located with Coastal Roots, and it's just an amazing opportunity, and we appreciate, of course, the ability to share in these grants. Thank you.
That does conclude comments.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and counsel a discussion and action next.
I don't have a lot to say. I think, I think the speaker said, said it for itself. I think it's, I'm just going to put a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any, any other comments from anybody? I would like to add mine, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I was, with the Meals on Wheels comment, I was, I was picturing my grandmother and her telling the person who showed up with her food, "Let's sit down and play cards. Let's hang out." And you're so right, the impact it has on people goes beyond food, and I think that's true. You could say that in some capacity about all of these services. It was what we all appreciate about it. I did have a question for staff, or I guess staff could refer to this question. I was curious on the, I want to get my glasses, on the residential rehabilitation. What's the process of identifying home repair candidates? Like, is it through volunteer services, is it through city service? Can you describe that for us?
Yeah, the, we do advertise the program in a number of different ways. This past year, we've contacted all the mobile home parks, given them flyers to hang up. We've delivered flyers to them. We've gone through the senior commission for asking them to pass out the flyers with Karen, so we appreciate that effort. We put it in our social media, the city's social media, the city newsletter. So we try and get the information out there, and then we rely on people to contact us and fill out our application.
Could we, would it be possible to create a database for groups to, to be on for when the request comes out to let them know, hey, now's the time to look out in your network and see who we can have, who might be looking for this opportunity? I feel like there are a lot of groups in our community, in our city, who probably can identify these people very quickly for us, and it's a matter of making, connecting those dots. I'd really love to see that happen, if that's something we could do through the city to, to just create that database of those leads that we hit up as part of. I think that would be really good, because it seems like the, to get to the next level isn't just money, it's, it's the volunteer effort of the community. And judging by everybody here today, I think we have that within the community to, to kind of build on and take advantage of, kind of working smarter, not harder. I love everything, everything in this program. I think everybody up here does. I think, I know the community, from everyone I speak to in my district and across the city, supports all these programs, is really grateful for them, so I'm going to be obviously supporting this.
Is that a second? Oh, I didn't show a second yet.
San Antonio gave a second.
It has the second? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking down here for the second. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yes, thank you. It warms my heart to hear the stories of the people who we are able to serve with our partners, our CBDG partners. Thank you for your great work. Thank you for bringing us data back so that we could see the numbers and really get a sense of who we're helping, and, and thanks for doing the best jobs. I'm very proud of this program, proud of everyone who's involved in it. I know as far as, on page three of the report, the residential rehab program shows that we didn't use all of the money on that yet. I do understand that it's not going to go away so good, and I'll support Councilmember O'Hara's suggestion that if there's, if there are more ways, we can, you know, know who to contact and get the information out. Always, I will state my support for us continuing to do that. And as well, I would support us as we look at this program and as we think about it for upcoming years, that we look at where the need is in our community and suggest how to match the funds that are available with the people in need the best way possible. So that may mean some evolution of how we think about the program within the constraints and within the objectives of HUD and the source of the fundings, of course. So continued improvement and a great deal of support from me right now. Thank you.
And I would echo everything said up here. I think I agree with everything said. It's a great project. I think we have a great program and continue to support it. On the residential rehabilitation program, I wanted to ask one more question. Does it only apply to owners, or does it apply to owners or renters? And if so, how, how would a low-income person apply, let's say if they were a renter?
This program only applies to owners.
Okay. That answers that question.
The renters could encourage the owners to apply for it.
But would, would a property owner that is renting, would it have to be a low-income qualified rental?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so maybe there is a possibility there if, if it's a deed-restricted unit.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on expanding our program to include some other aspects.
And is that something that would come back as an ordinance or policy change to us, or would that stay within the department?
It sure would. Yeah, it sure would.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll bring that back.
I, I would support that, so I think that, that sounds great. Councilmember O'Hara.
Oh, I, I love that idea. I would want safeguards in that so that we're not giving giveaways to Blackstone. I want to make sure that this goes to the deserving. Just like these units, I'd like to see us work on an ordinance to bring something forward, to make sure that these, the units in the developing, developments that we're, they're putting out, they're going to the right people. Just like that with this program, I'd like to make sure that, in that aspect of if somebody owns a property, it's the right property, it's not a corporation.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to be repairing STVRs, yeah, for vacationers. So with that, I don't have any other speakers. We'll call the question.
And just reiterate, the motion is staff recommendation, correct?
Correct. I see nods.
And that motion does carry unanimously?
Okay, and that moves us on to item 10C. And 10C is the approval of revisions to the City of Encinitas Engineering Design Manual incorporating essential updates to language, standards, and procedures to align with current requirements for obtaining a land development engineering permit. And the contact person is Senior Engineer Stryker. When you bring engineering up, everybody clears the room, you know? Have you noticed this? Just saying.
Very riveting item here. Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public. Ben Stryker, Senior Engineer in the Engineering Department. Item 10C is the 2025 revisions to the city's engineering design manual. We'll give just some quick background on this project. So the city has, we call it our engineering design manual. It's a collection of all of our standards and processes primarily for land development engineering, but it's used across all divisions of engineering. It's intended mainly as a guidebook for designing and submitting permits for approval through the city, helping out owners, developers, the local design firms out there to get approved permits through the city. The document as it stands now is divided into seven chapters. We'll talk briefly about each one, but just kind of, just title-wise, we got maps and city map review, permits and processes guidelines, grading plan preparation and submittal, sewer design, water design, drainage design, and then stormwater BMP design. And the current document was adopted in October of 2009. So as you can probably imagine, a lot has changed since 2009. It's definitely overdue for updates, and I can tell you that this was actually a great collaboration across all the different departments in the city that plays a role in this document. So land development engineering played a big role in this, CIP, Traffic Division, the San Diego Water District, utilities, so the wastewater division, and as well as Public Works. We got together, we've been working on this for almost two years now. This was fully in-house, and we just sort of chipped away at it one section at a time, and we feel like it's in a better state now that reflects sort of our current policies and guidelines that we utilize in our, you know, our new, like, electronic submittal process. So high-level changes that are kind of throughout all the chapters that I'm not going to highlight in each different one here. So of course, anytime we come across any sort of errors or typos, we fix those, and then we also address any sort of changes to the city's org chart that have occurred since 2009. There were a couple areas where it wasn't quite the right director that was being referenced, that has the authority now, so just updated all that throughout. One important element of this process that we went through, we wanted to make sure we engage with the public, and so we kind of took it from a two-pronged approach here. So we reached out to the more like professional design community, reaching out directly to our, the engineering firms, architects, folks that are the ones actually preparing these plans that we review. That occurred through what is, what's called the Industry Advisory Committee. It's more of like a open house, sort of a, a meeting that's hosted by Development Services, usually twice a year, where we invite, like I said, engineers, architects, developers, to meet with city staff. We go over, if there are any big, like, policy changes, like when we updated our stormwater design manual recently, we'll go over that, and then just kind of open it up as an opportunity, any high-level questions they have about getting a permit in the city of Encinitas, concerns that they have, issues, they can air those concerns at those meetings. So, yeah, all that to say, we went in March of 2025 and provided PDF attachments of the red lines, and one of the suggestions from the folks that attended at that March meeting was we do a follow-up, sort of an extra meeting where they could get the word out to the other firms that they know to get some more involvement too. So we kind of convened that group twice, once in March, once in April. Additionally, the city engineering department, we meet monthly with all the utility agencies that operate within the city, just to coordinate on projects and really anything that we want to discuss as a whole group. So we brought this document in, both in March and April, to discuss at that point. Then the second prong of this was just more broad, general public notice, too. So we published a legal notice in Coast News. We put it on the city website and accepted comments for over 30 days through a comment form from, for that side of things. So all this together, we consolidated every comment, every question, every suggestion in the form of this, we're calling it our final public comment report, similar to what you would see on like a citizen participation plan final report. So every question we got, we've provided a response and an explanation as to whether or not we implemented the suggestion and why we did or didn't do so. So yeah, that's attachment two in the report. And then just a couple housekeeping. So we attached for each of the chapters full redlined changes. So the black text is exactly the same as the current adopted EDM document. It's only the colored language is different. And then, so that's attachments three through eight, and then the final one, attachment nine, is sort of a tabulated, all of the changes are summarized. So you can kind of read it backwards if you go in nine, and it kind of helps you navigate through the rest. So like I said, I'll, I'll go into a little bit more detail. Try not to get too much into the weeds. I'll let you guys do that for us here. But just kind of rolling through each chapter and sort of major changes, starting with chapter one. This is Maps and City Review, covers all of our standards and procedures for processing subdivisions and parcel maps, just local guidelines to remain in compliance with the Subdivision Map Act. And really, the only thing we changed here is just reflecting current electronic submissions versus the old style of actually physically delivering it. And you'll, you'll hear that a few times here through these chapters. So, chapter two, Permits and Processes, outlines all the permits that land development engineering issues out. So mainly, it's grading permits, and then the other half is public right-of-way permits, and those sort of vary from like, very minor, just like a traffic control permit or temporary encroachment, all the way up to your full public improvement permits. And outlines what you need to submit for each one of those, and how they get issued, and inspection processes, all that good stuff. Main changes, just again, the electronic submittal updates. We updated some of the inspection processes for, for grading inspections, just updates from 2009 to reflect current policy. And then finally, a betterment that we've been trying to figure out a way to implement for a while, emergency work. So our utility partners that operate in the city, sometimes they have to go out on planned outages or the, once in a while, like a water main break or something. We've never had like a formal policy in place for the agency to reach out to the city and who exactly to reach out to, to make sure information can be disseminated the best way. So working with all the utility agencies, we came up with a good policy on how that happens. So when an agency needs to go in and they demo a sidewalk for an emergency, and it sits there for a few weeks, when we get the call inevitably, like, hey, what's going on here? We should, going forward, have the answer instead of needing to run around and figure out what's going on. So that's a, that's a good change. Chapter three, Grading Plan Preparation and Submittal Requirements, all of our standards, procedures for preparing, submitting, approving grading plans. Mainly here, clarifying some stormwater discussions that are contained within chapter three, to just make sure they're aligned with our actual requirements for drainage and stormwater, which is chapters six and seven, and then just again, process updates, electronic submittal stuff. Chapter four, Sewer Design. This is our sanitary sewer requirements for most of old Encinitas, Olivenhein, Cardiff, and I believe portions of new Encinitas as well. This, it doesn't include the service area of Lucadia wastewater district, just because they're a separate entity with their own standards. A lot of these updates are just updated to reflect current regional standards and California Plumbing Code for public sewer design. We're almost there. Water Design. This is the shortest of all the chapters. This is the engineering standards for the San Diego Water District area. So again, like the Olivenhein Municipal Water District, that's a separate entity. That's not included in this document. Just really clarifying language on what Just really clarifying language on what adopted standards SDWD uses for their requirements. And then we had fire prevention, just confirm that the fire demand calculations section in there is consistent with the building code now. All right, finally, chapters six and seven. So chapter six is the Drainage Design Requirements, and chapter seven is the Stormwater BMP Design Manual. Collectively, this covers all of our standards and regulations for drainage reports, drainage design, and then your required like stormwater treatment facilities. So, the main change here is we consolidated these two chapters into one, and we're going to call it the Drainage and Stormwater Design. The reason we opted to do that, the Stormwater BMP Design Manual is kind of its own thing, its own document with its own sort of regularly scheduled updates, kind of maintained through the Regional Water Quality Control Board to remain compliant with our stormwater discharge permit. So instead, what we've done is, in chapter six, very close to the top, is we just sort of set that expectation that in addition to the stormwater design, all projects will need to remain in compliance with the requirements in the most current version of the Stormwater BMP Design Manual. The other change is that we updated the regional reference to reflect the current San Diego County Hydrology Manual. And that really, that covers all the different chapters. I'll leave it there. We got all key staff members that were involved in the various different broad topics covered, so happy to answer any questions you all have.
Do we have any preliminary questions? If not, I'll go to, see if we have any public.
I guess one question is, you kind of mentioned on chapter four about Lucadia Water, we just had an issue with Lucadia Water on Piraeus. I know this is not this, I know Dan is very intimate to that, that issue. Is there any way for us to make sure that, more for future engineers to make sure that we're coordinating, or they're better yet, they're coordinating with us when they are working with us? I know it's not a requirement, but how do we go about making sure that that's part of the process to make sure that they do cooperate with us?
So, Councilmember Schaefer, you are correct. We cannot dictate certain things for Lucadia Wastewater District because they are their own independent utility agency. So they are a state agency. Now with that being said, we did find some, some kinks from that one particular project, and we have actively had discussions with Lucadia Wastewater District since then, and we're going to be looking at how we implement a couple new strategies to ensure that we incorporate their construction methodologies. So really, it's not dictating how they're going to design things, but working hand-in-hand to better be able to serve their constituents and ours in a manner that we're not being as disruptive.
Copy. Thanks, thanks Dan.
One more thing really quick. As we said, the city does have a monthly utility meeting with all of the utility agencies, Cox, AT&amp;T, SDG&E, and Lucadia Wastewater District is a member. And whenever we have, they have big projects, we always ask, will you send us your plans, please, so that we know where the work is going to be going on? And we also make sure that they do have a traffic control plan if it's on a city street. So we try as much as we can at the monthly utility meeting to say, SDG&E, Lucadia Wastewater, do you have big projects going on? Let us see them, let us know where they are, so we can try to get in front of these issues.
Yeah, it's just, 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 on Piraeus, we had this for everybody's edification, is we own the streets, we own all that stuff, but Lucadia Wastewater owns the pipes underneath. So they come in and they have this project, and it was extremely inconvenient for the people living near around, and we had no leverage whatsoever. So I appreciate your guys' efforts and continuing to make that smoother throughout. As we're going to have more projects coming along, it's going to be imperative that that's a little bit better than it was this last time.
Absolutely. And we've heard the community loud and clear on that, Councilmember.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of clarification? No public speaker, so I'd open and close the public. So in that case, Deputy Mayor Lines.
Yeah, thanks. Ben, you smile when you present all this, so you must love what you do. So I appreciate that. Other people would say, well, maybe this is like engineering, not too interesting, but I appreciate that, that it looks like you enjoy it. I do want to move the staff fragmentation for approval of this updated manual. I do also want to go on the record saying, we need to do this more regularly. So I've already spoken with the city manager about it, you know, at least no more than every five years. And then that goes to my only question, just for clarity, I think I know what the answer is, but since you indicated that you did some of these updates to make sure that they were in conformance with the current building code standards, in this past period of time when perhaps our own standards weren't in conformance with the Uniform Building Code standards, did we make sure that there was the uniform building standards that prevailed and communicated that and made sure that all the designs and construction that happened in our community were meeting the proper standards?
Yes, yeah. And where there is overlap, there is a hierarchy, and typically, building code is, is very high to the top. So in these minor areas, like the couple of sections I mentioned, it is overlap, and just to try to avoid confusion, because we were updating it, we made sure that they were in line and consistent. But yeah, to, to our knowledge, it's, yeah, the building code takes precedent over the engineering design.
And I'll add a little bit to that, Deputy Mayor. So first of all, you're absolutely right, from a timely perspective, we are going to be updating this more regularly, and that is going to be something that you as council members should see. Our goal is roughly every three to five years. To the second question, the, the Engineering Design Manual does not actually pertain to buildings per se from a structural standpoint. That is the building code itself. That evolves and is approved by the state, and anytime that there is a change or approval, that automatically comes down to a local agency level as well. So just because we haven't had an update to the Engineering Design Manual, that doesn't mean that any of the federal or state mandated requirements or laws have not been incorporated. They all have been.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I will second the motion, and really appreciate it. I wanted, wanted to say that I really appreciate this being done in-house because you're the group that understands the process, the flow, and rather than bringing in a consultant and having the consultant ask you, how should I do this, and then you telling them, this is, this is the way we should do more, more work like this, and I love that you did it that way. I also really appreciate the track changes. It made it so easy, so obvious to review this, to read through it and go, yeah, I see why you did that, and it just bang, 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 right on down. So with that, and I do support the continuous updates, the regular updates, and keep updating it as we improve our process and as we improve our, our online system. You know, I recently, this is separate from this, but I recently got to do a plumbing permit online, and it was an interesting experience in the high-tech field, we call it eating our own dog food. And so as we continue to eat our own dog food, and I encourage us to do that, we should improve the online CSS system, and then I would see that reflecting as more frequent changes here, and so I'm very supportive of it. To move to, to questions, and this is more about the Industrial Advisory Committee. I just wanted to understand, it sounds like it's a fairly informal group. Is there a membership, or do we have minutes from the meetings, anything like that?
You're correct, Mayor Ayers. It's a very informal group. Anyone can request the meeting invite. They happen at City Hall, like I said, usually like two times a year. We do have meeting minutes. They're not on the website, but they are available for public review, so.
So a PRA could get them, and we could see, great. And, and who do people contact if they want to get, if public wants to be notified of this meeting?
Yeah, so it's led by Development Services. So I'm sure we can get more exact contact, but yeah, it's Development Services.
So, so either Scott Dropkin or, or somebody in Development Services would be the person to contact.
Mr. Mayor, just, just to add to that, we are going to be putting on the city calendar the dates that we have the Industry Advisory Committee meetings. And just, just for everyone's edification, how we run these advisory committee meetings, it's pretty standard for, for local agencies, and it's a very informal process, so it's not unique here to the city of Encinitas. Other local agencies run it in a very similar informal way. So we're not doing anything.
Well, and you, but you know, some of the questions that came up during the meeting were people on the committee requesting additional, what's the word, discretion from the director. And, and that, that's getting into that, the bright sunshine of public scrutiny is, that's a good time to have that. So I just wanted to make sure we had that. I really appreciate it being put on the standard city calendar. I think that is a big step towards letting people know when it will occur, and, and having minutes is another very, very good practice. I would encourage that it be continued. So with that, I think that was really all my questions. Other things will come along later. Oh, one last comment was the, the frequently, the answers to the questions, you could tell those were very technical questions. And there, I really appreciated the format that showed the question and the response, question, response. So that was also a very good approach.
Mr. Mayor, I did just hear our next industry, Industry Advisory Committee is going to be December 2nd.
December 2nd?
December 2nd.
December 2nd?
We'll get that on the calendar if it's not yet, but just wanted everyone to be aware.
Perfect, thank you. And with that, I'll yield to Councilmember San Antonio.
I just want to say thank you very much, that from 2009 to now, that's quite a bit of code and, of updating. You guys, I'm sure, have had to pour through so many things, so I know it's a lot of reading, I know it's a lot of minute details and stuff, so I can appreciate what you guys did to update that. I will agree with my fellow councilmembers that that's, it is a long time to wait for that update, but I'm glad you guys did it. Hopefully in the future, we'll have, you know, a lot of these questions you probably get asked all the time, they'll be in the manual, so I'm excited for it.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Okay, so I did have a few questions. First one, I was trying to, you know, I went through all the questions, I went through the pages, the chapters, and there were a few terms that I just wanted to, to sauce through a little bit. First one was on 4.302.1.E. and 4.302.2.
Do you have a page number, out of curiosity?
I don't, but I can tell you the term, and I think they'll have the term, I think they're going to have a simple definition for, explanation for me, but I just, you referenced the term inaccessible areas, and I was wondering, what does this apply to? And, and it said upgraded language, I don't know what the upgraded language is, and I couldn't find it in the documents presented, I apologize, I'm sure it's in there.
One more time, 4.?
4.302.1.E. and 4.302.2 refers to inaccessible areas, changing that language. And I was wondering, what does that mean, or what does it apply to? And what is the upgraded language? Sorry, it, it wasn't 100% clear to me, and like I said, I...
It's 192.
So page 193.
So there, there is a definition on that, thank you, Chris, appreciate it. So an inaccessible area, which includes areas that wastewater maintenance vehicles are unable to access due to topography, no dedicated access paths, access paths that are not constructed with stabilized material, there are obstructions or right-of-way restrictions, et cetera. So that would be the definition of inaccessible.
And is that, that's, that's the new language? Okay, that's, I wasn't sure on that. Thank you, I appreciate the clarification. My next one was, it was only questions actually. The plan check turnaround, 2.502.4. Is this a, a change made to bring us more in line with state law? Or is this, I'm sorry, I apologize for sending you guys through all these pages, I appreciate it though.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
I apologize, say again.
So, yeah, it's, sorry, I wrote the, the number down and not the page number. 2.502.4, which talks about in line with, talks about plan check turnarounds. I know that's been an issue or a question, a question of residence.
Page 119.
Along the way, and I'm just wondering, are we bringing it more in line with state law or with that, with that aspect? What is the goal of that, I guess?
I'm finding that on page 119.
So if it's, plan check turnaround time. So in, in that section, there, there are no proposed changes to that language. So everything in 5 point, sorry, 2.502.4, all of that is the language as it exists today in the EDM.
Okay, you had it under question eight, that's why I came to that question. Okay, great. And then one of your questions was, actually, I'm going to circle back to that. The other, the other, the one I was a little weary of, and I definitely would like to get a little bit, a better explanation of and make sure that we are protecting our residents is, on question number six, you responded, "Or at the discretion of city engineer," and it seemed to be used as often as possible. And I'm not going to lie, it makes me a little uncomfortable. I'd like to think that we're sticking to our objective standards wherever we can, and we use discretion when it is absolutely necessary on things. It seemed to say, use this as much as possible in the question, so I'm a little uncomfortable with it, I'm being honest, because I, I don't want, I want to make sure our residents are protected by a line like this.
Of course, and... Yeah, and as a city engineer, Councilmember O'Hara, what I can say is, from a response standpoint, there is a large push from private industry to have more discretion at the city engineer level. We like to ensure that we have a bright line on the majority of our code, which is the reason why we have responded that to the maximum extent practical, we are already giving the city engineer discretion. We want to limit that discretion. We don't want to have city engineer discretion over the entire Engineering Design Manual.
So I'd like to see some limitation in that, that verbiage, because I don't feel protected as a resident, and, and I don't like that we're giving discretion to make the process easier. That's not what we do here. What we do is we provide the highest level of service. And I know that that's probably part of our using it, but I could also see it being misused.
Absolutely. So, so again, the response that it has been, the response stated does not change the discretion that we have in the actual design manual. So where we have discretion given to the city engineer, that is already dictated in the Engineering Design Manual. This response does not modify how that is, is credited throughout the Engineering Design Manual. And, and we really only limit it to situations where there are large degrees of gray in design, which in the engineering world, there are, so it, it can be tough at times to have a bright line. Those are the only situations that we have had, that we are allowing discretion for the city engineer. So this is, the response to question six is not actually, it's not part of the Engineering Design Manual. We only have discretion as stated in specific instances within the manual, if that makes sense.
And if I may, we, we also as staff prefer not to have discretion, because when you add discretion, every application that comes in is going to ask for an exemption or a change. So to Dan's point, there are some areas of the code where... So, to Dan's point, there are some areas of the code where there's already sort of a, it's not quite black and white, and there's some level of discretion of the city engineer, but it, to the response there, it's, the discretion has been added to the document to the maximum extent practicable.
I appreciate that. I still stand a little bit, I'm a little cautious of opening the door to discretion. I'd like to see us harden that language and not use it just broadly.
And, Councilmember, is, were there any locations throughout the document that you had concerns where we had that information? Because if there were, those are things that maybe we could take...
Well, no, and maybe that's something we can take out. I'm more concerned with the answer to the question being discretion has been added to the maximum extent practicable, and to me, the maximum extent means as often as we could. That's what I, I know, but I know what you're saying, I'm saying, when you read that, that's what, that's where your mind goes.
Yeah, I think what they were saying is that where it existed, you added the phrase "to the extent practicable," right? In other words, it wasn't there before, before it just said "to the discretion of the city engineer," and so you actually limited the discretion by doing that change.
Right, right.
Even though the request, and that's why my comment earlier about wanting more public in the industrial meeting, because I can imagine your professional customers asking for more discretion, which is what...
So, what does practicable mean?
It is within the engineering judgment, in other words, before it...
What does that mean?
Well, before, it didn't, it didn't even say that.
I get it, but we're still, we've gone from really vague to kind of vague.
Yeah, that is absolutely true.
So, are we protected? I mean, it's a...
I think this is a situation where we need to look at the individual locations where it's used and decide...
I would be all for that. I'd love to, I'd love to ask you to maybe look through that, come back with some answers to that question as part of this. I don't know if that's a friendly amendment I could add to this.
Well, I think that's part of the regular update. I actually think we're going to be back every other year for a while, while we get the process smoothed out of the electronic online application, because right now, just based on my experience and talking to quite a few, especially small developers, the online system, although it's very rigid and has lots of choices, it's confusing for quite a few people. So, I envision more frequent, like every other year type, updates where if we have examples of this in there, we would correct it, if we have examples where the online doesn't quite match the engineering manual...
But we have the software right now to dive into this, pull out every time it's sent, and say, "Is this a practicable? Is this a reasonable? Is, how can we dive this down to make it more clear?" We have that software, so why not use it?
I think the best way to approach this is to look at examples, so, I mean, I'd like to approve this tonight. We could have a second action item attached to the action item, to the motion, that would say, "Also, in looking forward to the next change, can you come back with an analysis of where that discretion exists, particular examples, and is there even future better wording than where practicable?" Does that get to the heart of what you're, I don't think they're increasing the discretion right now with that statement.
I don't think, yeah, but I don't think they're, practical to me, what's practical to me might not be practical to you, it might be totally practical to Luke or Joy, it's a vague reference.
In that case, it's practicable to the city engineer.
Okay, what does that mean?
And again, sorry, just to reiterate, that is simply a response to a question. It has no bearing on the design manual itself. There are specific locations in the design manual where we do state that the city engineer has discretion. The number of instances, I don't believe, changed at all from our 2009 document to this modification, so we have not increased that discretion at all. Again, the intent is we want to decrease it, because we don't want to have a gray area aside from locations that we know, in our experience, we do need to have some limited discretion.
I think everybody in the firm wants to do the right thing, everybody wants to get the best result. I think using vague language doesn't get us the best result, and I'm just going to leave it there as far as that goes. With my next question, under the traffic control, this is more of a processing, that's 2.2.0, you don't really have to look it up, it's talking about standard drawings for traffic control plans. Will this be the section where we can start to look into, or is it going to be separate that we look into our circulation element, or we can start to talk about cumulative traffic plans as opposed to standard traffic plans that we currently use?
Yeah, I can feel that one. So, 2208 traffic control plan, this is for the application and issuance of a temporary traffic control permit. So, this is the cone setup and detour plans that are temporary only for construction activities.
Okay. Perfect. I appreciate that. Again, reading through the question, I didn't have the full link, and I couldn't find it on there. Perfect, I appreciate the answer to that question. Again, I still stand with that concern about the practicable, the use of the word practicable as opposed to something a little bit clearer, but I think I made my point.
Okay.
I think I'm the last speaker for, I would agree with Councilmember O'Hara, just on the next iteration, just highlight those areas, and that way, we, if nothing else, ideally get us, I mean, city manager, if we can't get, just get where we, where they are, where are those areas? And so, if there's five, there's five, if there's 50, well, then we probably need to have another agenda, you know, item for it. So, I'm assuming it's not 50, I'm just, I know that the group over there is trustworthy, so. The question I will say for the next iteration is to, you know, almost like a personalized checklist, I mean, I know that the technology is moving faster, but the ability to, once we do submit, is there a follow-on checklist to make sure? I know that City of Encinitas is one of the hardest cities to get through permit process-wise. Next-door neighbor just did a full remodel, and I've got a number of friends that have done it, and probably do it myself in the future, but the fact of the matter is, is it's a very hard city, somewhat intentional, I think, at one point for that reason, but when we submit, what's the follow-on checklist? Because I don't know that, especially if we're going more online, the ability to submit and then through the process be able to get a kickback of what I still have left, or a lot of people use outside engineers or outside architects that don't, aren't knowledgeable about Encinitas, and there's some uniqueness here in this city specifically to get through. I don't know them all, that's your guys'.
Yeah, and there is a checklist, and that's maintained by the Development Services Department. We'll make sure to pass that on to them and see if there's...
And I've talked about this with city managers, so I think it's just, it's just while we're here and it's out in the public kind of thing, so I appreciate all your guys' work. Thank you.
And just to fill in, I did a quick search of the report, the document, which includes all the wording for practicable. It's not in there other than in the, in that one comment, and I looked up discretion to see where within the body of the document discretion is used, and it just says discretion of the city engineer, and it's unchanged from before in the 25, 37 out of 87 examples I found.
The item doesn't say city engineer to the maximum extent practicable, their response is to the maximum extent practicable, that's so, that's not, you're missing the point. The point is they're saying it's to the practicable.
No, no, I'm not missing the point. What I'm saying is, I don't think it changed the document this time, and I support what Councilmember Schaefer said, that our next iteration, we, if we can come up with a way of bounding that discretion, which I think is your point.
Yep.
Yeah, and so, but probably not...
You're making it clear what that discretion means, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Anytime we can, anytime we can reduce the breadth of discretion down to what we really mean in the document, we should do that, so that there's fodder for the next iteration. And did you want to go again?
I just wanted to say, you know, I was, I kind of dug into this quite a bit, and appreciate the explanation of to look at it in my briefing. And I do want to say, I didn't say it and I should have, I thought you did a great job presenting this, I really appreciate you taking the time to summarize some of these questions. I know it's tough on you, but I really appreciate the time. Yield.
So, we have a motion and a second, and no other speakers? Can I call the question? Call in the question.
And then the motion is just to adopt the resolution, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That motion does carry unanimously.
Awesome, and that brings us on to, we don't have any informational items, and we don't have a council-initiated item tonight, and then that brings us to item 13, council, city council member reports pursuant to AB 1234, and I'll start down at the far end with Councilmember San Antonio.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Last week, I attended the North County Transit District meeting. We discussed the future of the train service, which constantly working to improve the environmental consideration as well as the use of the train. So, we're currently working towards a electric fleet of trains, which is a pretty fascinating next step. Within that, we also discussed, we're going to be looking to align the weekend schedules better for users and look at ways to spread out the use of the train. So, if you have questions, or you feel like you missed the train, or like that, NCTD is currently looking for that information, you can send it to them, and we can improve that service. So, that's my report.
And speaking of trains, I attended the Los Sand Metro Link board meeting a week ago, and as the representative for Sandag, where we also heard a report on the pilot project, which is the electric trains, which are going to be tested out in the Los Angeles area and north of Los Angeles. And this morning, I attended the Encina Wastewater Authority meeting, board meeting, and nothing significant to report.
And I attended the same board meeting, and it was basically run-of-the-mill approvals for expenditures. I also attended Sandag Joint Policy Committees, that was a combination of the Regional Planning Group and the Transportation Group and one other, where we reviewed the draft regional transportation plan. That currently has an open EIR on it, so now through, I want to say, I want to say October 12th or 13th, mid-October, so now is the time to get comments in on the EIR for the public, and that same presentation of the draft, RTP, will be at Friday's Sandag Board Meeting, so I get to see it twice, so hopefully it'll sink in. But that's it for my report. City manager report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We don't have another meeting until October 15th, so I just got a couple events I wanted to announce. On October 4th, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00, we have a free universal waste collection event, so Encinitas residents can safely dispose of things like batteries, bulbs, electronics, and sharps. Please make sure to bring proof of residency, and again, that's going to be right here at Encinitas City Hall from 9:00 to 1:00. Also, that day, we have art night later on in the evening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, that is coming back. We will be showcasing art at City Hall, the Encinitas Community Center, the Library and Pacific View Art Center. There'll be a free shuttle that'll be able to take people around to the different locations, experience an evening filled with captivating art exhibits, live music performances, and immersive workshops. So, again, that is going to be on Saturday, October 4th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at a couple of our locations, and I just wanted to remind everybody that the City of Encinitas Incorporated in October 1st of 1986. So, next Wednesday, we, 39 years of incorporation for this wonderfully great city, so I don't know if it's like happy anniversary, happy birthday, but just want to make sure everyone celebrates that Encinitas became a city 39 years ago next Wednesday, so thank you.
And city attorney report?
Very briefly, many of you have heard about Senate Bill 707. Senate Bill 707 would, if approved by the governor, require significant changes and requirements for not all cities, but it would include Encinitas and other cities in the county that require two-way audiovisual platforms for attendance meetings, as well as translation services for, you know, populations that are 10%, sorry, 20% or more of the population. Currently, it's been passed by the legislature and is sitting on the governor's desk for signature. We'll provide a more comprehensive update if and when the governor signs it at our next meeting.
So, this is like meeting procedures, I think, I heard somebody call it a Super Brown Act?
It is, it is a Super Brown Act, it's the most significant Brown Act revision since the Brown Act was adopted.
Okay, wow. And city clerk report?
Just repeat what the city manager mentioned, that the October 8th city council meeting was canceled, and so our next regular meeting is on October 15th.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned at 7:46.